Let's do it.
Great. So, uh, welcome, everybody. I'd like to call this, uh, April 16 work session to order. We've got two items on the agenda today. We will be conversing with Dan Blue, who is here from Recology. Recology, of course, is the company that provides Manzanita and many neighboring communities our, to use the old term, garbage service. I know there's much fancier ways to refer to it now, but I'll go old school on that, Dan. So Dan is here. Um, that's part of the regular schedule of review of rates. We got a little off last, uh, in the slash cycle, so this will get us back on cycle and he'll talk us through that. And then immediately following that, we have our second topic, which Leila, uh, will facilitate, and that is the topic of service and how we'll be operating at the new city hall. And I for one am very excited to start to be able to focus on that question now. Um, took a lot to be able to, it took a lot to get done in order to earn the right to have that conversation. So, uh, I'm sure we'll all enjoy that and are looking forward to it. So I'm going to turn it over to Dan at this point. Dan, I think unless Leila has any opening comments for Dan, we'll, uh, have you take us through what we need to understand from you and your company today.
Great. Thank you, Mayor Stark, and, uh, good afternoon, uh, members of council and staff and any, um, citizens that are watching. My name is Dan Blue and I'm the government relations manager for Recology Northern Oregon. And, uh, on the call as well, and if I think Katie is going to, um, cover one of the slides that we'll go through. Uh, Katie Hardisty, our, our operations manager for the coast. And then Nick Olheiser, our, uh, assistant general manager for, um, much of our Northern Oregon operations is on the call as well. And so I'm going to go ahead and share a screen now.
Great.
I think, uh, this, uh, all right. It looks like you can see that. So, uh, everybody hear me? Okay?
Yep.
Okay. Great. Thank you. Um, just a, a little overview of, um, Recology. I know I've done this before, but in case there's new folks in the room. Uh, we, we are a west coast only garbage and recycling company. Um, we have just under 4,000 employee owners across the company. We serve 137 different communities through 26 collection companies. Uh, and we operate, uh, 24 transfer stations, 14 material recovery facilities. That's where recyclables go to be sorted into different, uh, commodities. And we also operate eight composting facilities, including three here in Oregon. Uh, we'll talk a little bit more about our specific, uh, operations here at the coast in the next slide. Um, I do want to emphasize that we don't generally own landfills and not are driven by profits at landfills. We, we really are a materials management company. Um, focused on, um, providing safe, efficient, uh, and cost affordable services for the communities that we serve, like Manzanita. And so really happy to be with you here today. So I'm going to go to the next slide. I think this one's for you, Katie.
Uh, hello, I'm Katie Hardisty, operations manager for here at the coast. So Recology gets to, serve 11 jurisdictions on the coast here, including Manzanita. Our main office is based out of Warranton, Oregon, where the, the majority of our collection, uh, collections happen in Clatzen County. We also operate the Astoria Transfer Station up here in Astoria. And then we have our satellite site down in Haylam that serves Manzanita, Haylam, Wheeler and parts of Rockaway. And we have three drivers, uh, based out of that site, Mark Olson, Carl Peters and Nick Benbow.
Great. Thank you, Katie. Um, okay. So with that, I'm going to switch over into the rate review process and Mayor Stark, um, Stock, excuse me. I know, uh, you have in your packets our cover letter, our annual report, um, as well as the proposed rate sheets. I wasn't going to show that and go through it line by line, but I can provide an overview, um, of that, the kind of the highlights of it. It's a, it's a modest, uh, increase this year that we're requesting, but happy to answer any of those questions about the, that's in the content there that, that you have in front of you, uh, once I get through this. So, um, let's see. So, so as you know, you know, we have the privilege of being your franchise hauler serving Manzanita. Um, that franchise gives us exclusivity over garbage collections. And in return, we pay fees to the city. And we're, we're allowed to operate within a profit margin that's established by the franchise agreement. Uh, so this year, uh, we are requesting a 2.1% rate increase across all lines of service, really to keep pace with inflation, um, and to avoid having to come back next year with a larger rate request. Uh, this 2.1% pairs closely with, uh, CPI, which, uh, for March to March is 2.2%. So the impact of a 2.1% rate increase would be 57 cents a month on a, uh, 32 gallon customer. Uh, and 95 cents a month on your, your most common customer, which is in the 90 gallon cart. Um, so, you may recall last year, we didn't do anything on anyone's rates with the exception of the 32 side yard rate. Uh, and so nobody else saw a rate increase last year. Um, so, a little bit more about the nuts and bolts of the rate process. Uh, each year we conduct an annual financial review with, with reports due to the city on April 1st. Um, and as you know, we bundle, Manzanita, Nahalem and Wheeler into a single report for rate making purposes. This has been a long-term practice. I assume it's because of sort of the smaller size of, of the three jurisdictions. Um, but I really actually don't know how that came about originally. Um, to complete those reports that we submitted, we look at actual revenues and expenses for the previous year and projected revenues and expenses for the current 12 month cycle. Uh, let's see. The franchise stipulates a cost plus model where allowable costs are allowed, plus a reasonable margin are built into the rates. So the franchise itself states that the investment of the franchisee have a reasonable rate of return, not less than a percent and not more than 12%. Last calendar year, our margin was 6.02%. Um, the, the, which is a little bit outside of that allowable range. The primary pressure on the rates this year going forward are, there is a 2% increase at the Tillamook Transfer Station for the solid waste tip fees. Uh, and then also we had some, um, equipment costs. Mainly we took possession of a new truck that we had ordered quite a long time ago. Um, and that, that finally arrived. And then we've done a little bit of capital improvement at our Nahalem Yard where the trucks that service Manzanita are based out of. So we did some, uh, drainage and some paving work at that site. Uh, let's see. So really, I mean, that's, that's the highlights. Uh, this year we are seeking a 2.1% adjustment across all rates. Um, and that would get us to a 10.67% operating margin, roughly in the middle of the range. And so this is, um, what the red, this is a snapshot from the, the rate sheet that's in your packet. It shows your, your two, uh, most common customers, the 32 gallon curb would see a 57 cent a month rate increase under that 2.1%. And then the 90 gallon, uh, cart customer would see a 95%, a 95 cent rate increase per month. Uh, just to see what it looks like for a typical commercial customer with a 1.5 yard front load garbage dumpster. That would translate to $3.97 a month rate increase. So those are the highlights. Um, before we jump into questions, I just wanted to, um, throw out that we would, welcome, uh, anyone on council or staff to come tour, um, either the Nahalem Yard or, our Warranton offices, which houses our customer service folks and our operations teams, or the Astoria Transfer Station if that was of interest to you. So extending an invitation, if anyone's interested, you could reach out to me or Katie. Um, and with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you. I know a couple of our counselors, Jerry and Linda, took advantage of the offer last time and, did the route in the morning. Linda, there you are. I wasn't sure when you, I'm not sure when you joined us because I was looking at Dan. So, welcome to the meeting. I'm glad you could be here in person rather than on the phone. That's great. Thanks. Um, and I would like to take you up on that offer, um, Katie. So I'll, I'll be in touch, um, sometime. You're not, super urgent, but I really, I've been meaning to do it. It's a good way. It's a good additional way to see the community was kind of my line of thought. So anyway. Okay. So counselors, what questions do we have for Dan or Katie?
I've got, I've got a couple of questions. Actually, um, uh, I'm thinking back to the ride along I did. And one of the things that struck me about that was how often the driver had to get out of the car, out of the truck, I should say. Uh, and so that's when I learned about side yard, uh, customers. And shortly after that, uh, we had the presentation that involved the rate increase for them. So I guess I'm just curious, Dan, how, how did that rate increase land? How did it go over? What kind of pushback did you get? Or how's that looking? A year out?
Yeah. Thank, thanks, Counselor Spagman. That's, that's a great question. Um, we actually didn't hear from very many customers. Katie, I'm not recalling, m- maybe one or two Manzanita or if at all. Um, we, we had this 32 side yard adjustment land in a few different jurisdictions. We got very few calls. Uh, Katie, am I, am I speaking correctly there?
You're, you're correct. We had very few about the rate adjustment.
And then the other, the other part of it, we expected some attrition due to that rate increase on those customers, like folks choosing not to have the side yard service anymore. And that didn't materialize as much as we, we thought it might have. Uh, I think there's been a few, but not, not a wholesale like switching. So our drivers unfortunately are still spending that time getting out of the truck. Uh, but at least the rate is, is right sized, uh,
Yeah.
uh, for that extra service.
So you mentioned that the, the most common customer is a 90 gallon?
Correct.
And that, that surprises me. I'm just, uh, I just took for granted that, uh, everybody was a customer like me with a 32. So, how, what are the numbers roughly speaking in a town like Manzanita?
Well, I know you have about 840 customers, but in terms of the split between 90 and 32, Katie, can you provide that?
Uh, it's, the 90s just kind of are a little bit more ahead than the 32s.
Okay.
But it, it always upticks during the summer. We get people that, you know, and then people also like to do the every other week service with a 90.
Oh.
Okay.
Yeah, that's a good reminder. It's not just the size of the container, but the frequency of the service too. Yeah.
Well, one, okay, one last question on the frequency of the service. I, um, only recently became aware of the opportunity to have sort of, uh, on-call service. Uh, is that, used frequently throughout town or is that kind of a rarity?
No, it gets used often, especially during the winter times when, um, if it's a second or a vacation home and they, it's not, getting used very often, then it's just a will call. Um, and then call up and say, you know, I'd like a pickup on this day because they're there that week. And then it's just, it's just a pickup.
Okay. Great. All right. Well, thank you.
Thank you for the questions.
Sure.
Good. Counselors, other questions? Tom?
You, um, Dan, since, uh, Manzanita has lumped in with, uh, Nahalem and Wheeler, have you made the similar presentation to their city council? And is the rate change being proposed to them the same as what you're proposing with us?
Uh, thanks, Counselor Campbell. Uh, we have not presented to them yet. You, you all are first, uh, for the coast. Um, so, but the rate, rate, uh, proposed adjustment is the same, correct, Katie?
Yes.
Okay. And it, and again, this really is ties very closely to CPI, which is what we're seeing, uh, kind of across our, Western Oregon operations for even, you know, in the valley as well as the coast.
Other questions? Comments? Brad, anything? Nope. Linda, anything? Okay. Um, my comment would be, I think, so I haven't looked at the, um, I haven't looked at your detailed financials. I didn't have time to do that prior to the session. I will do that. It's always a good practice to do that and understand the detail that we won't get into in this meeting. So don't have questions about that. I think, um, I think we're all getting accustomed to the idea of, you know, CPI related increases. And the fact that it's better to do them regularly rather than maybe even every, you know, uh, every two years. I always forget, is that biannual? Is that the right word for that? Yeah, biannual. Um, and it's not comfortable for a lot of people and, you know, many people are concerned that all the bills are going up, but nonetheless, it's not a, it's not an argument against what you're presenting here today. So it seems like a reasonable increase. Um, and the service is good. The, I think the city is pleased with service and the customer service is good. The outreach is good. You offer a lot of varieties to people. I actually didn't know there was a will call. That will call, that's theater tickets. There's probably something else on call. Uh, so you know, that's, that's good. And I think people appreciate it in the community because of the different nature, um, we have in a coastal town of how long people are there and cycles with seasons, et cetera, et cetera. So, so that's all good. So I don't have a, a problem with, uh, with this rate increase. I think the last go around we had where we talked about the side yard thing, that helped us sort out some, anomalies in how some of the pricing was done. So I feel like we did some good work together to get that sorted out. So this just seems like, um, the kind of increase that we do ourselves when we looked at our master fee schedule this year and said, what services need to go up and what services, excuse me, what, um, what fees need to go up. I'm glad you mentioned the, um, improvements and I'm glad you mentioned the investment in, uh, equipment. So I think as we go forward, one of the things that helps people understand rate increases is also the idea and the, the visible experience of, of seeing that you are making capital investments in the company and keeping the service levels up, the equipment up, et cetera, et cetera. So that's great. And when you come back, when it's time for the next cycle, that'd be great to hear some more about as well. Um, a lot of businesses are challenged right now and it's a very, very uncertain future for many, many businesses in the United States right now. So if something, I guess I, I would say this, Leila, you'd have to tell me if this was in order or not, but we've got a lot of things. We don't know how it's going to go with the economy this next year. So we're going to, you know, this looks like a reasonable rate increase. It looks like it'll be okay. But if something goes awry or runs amok, whatever the technical term would be, we may, we'd be open to talking again, or at least understanding that there was a, a challenge. So I hope that wasn't out of order. And I'm going to ask our city manager if it was or not. Cause I know we have franchise agreement, et cetera.
I know I don't think so. And, um, the franchise agreement is pretty clear on how rates are increased and, yeah, Dan's done a great job keeping us on track with that. So.
Okay. Very good. So procedurally, um, what do we need to do at this work session and/or future sessions to take care of the rate increase, Leila?
Yeah. Um, well, that sounds like there's consensus, uh, among council about the rate increase. So I'll just work with Dan to prepare a resolution. You have to adopt a resolution, uh, with the new rate sheet attached to it. And so, um, I'll figure out with Dan whether that happens in May or June. And then the new rates go into effect July 1.
Okay. And then Dan, do you do communicate? I can't remember. Do you do communication out to customers directly about rate increases when they're confirmed and what, when customers would, can expect to see that on their bill? How does that work?
I'm going to let Katie tackle that one. I, I, I don't think we send a letter necessarily. I, I think, um, it, I, I should let Katie answer that question.
Great. Thanks.
Yeah. We don't send a letter out specifically, but we do have information on the backs of our bills that we do send out. And I believe find that information if you have, um, paperless billing within the account, your online account.
Okay. You do have responsibility to let customers know there's a rate increase coming in advance of,
Yeah.
in your bill.
Yeah, I'll double check on that and get back to you just to make sure I have it all correctly. Um, and I'll let you know.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Dan, anything else?
Uh, just, just wanted to thank you for the time this afternoon and I appreciate the good questions. I, I do, um, want to share that we, we've made great strides in our customer service team over the last six months, uh, where our hold times are averaging like two minutes and 30 seconds, which is vastly better than it was, um, in the past. And so, uh, a lot of kudos to our teams to, to making those improvements. Um, the, the notification to the, to the residents and the rate payers made me remember that we are looking at, uh, adding robo calls or robo texts to our system. So for things like inclement weather or a rate adjustment, um, we can notify customers very quickly with, you know, very simple messaging via text message. That's a technology that we hadn't adopted previously, but you know, with inclement weather and service, service impacts due to that, uh, at the coast, we think that's going to be a really good add-on to our services. And so the last thing I'll say is you brought up the trucks. I really appreciate that. Uh, we're, our average fleet age is over 14 years and, uh, due to COVID and supply chain issues, it, it took us two to four years to receive some trucks that we had ordered, um, back in 2020. Uh, so we, uh, we received some new trucks in the valley and, and one at the coast. And these are, these are long delayed deliveries of, uh, this important equipment. So I, I appreciate you acknowledging that.
No, that's good. That's good for your drivers and that's good for your customers. So, yeah.
Can I just ask a quick, quick question, um, of Dan? Uh, if you could add to that list of notification holidays? Because often like if there's a Monday holiday, we don't know whether you're coming or not coming. And that would be really helpful. Uh, if we could have, if we knew that you were going to come on those holidays. And lastly, um, I'd like to give super kudos to Carl. He's just been great. And, um, I, both, uh, Jerry and I rode with him last year and he, he is just a super employee and we really appreciate that service. So, thank you.
Thank you. We'll, we'll pass that feedback back, uh, to, to Carl, uh, Council President Kozlowski. We really appreciate it.
Okay, great. Well, thank you. Um, we will see you again when the time is right. We appreciate the, uh, the participation, or at least the visibility of all three of you this morning. So thanks a lot. You're welcome to stay while we talk about service at city hall. I think Dan, we'll have you back probably at some point in the near future with, uh, Jesse and Justin, right? To talk about kind of what happened with the RMA.
Yes.
Uh, Cody was handling a lot of that. So I'm even a little gray as to what, what those next steps are, but, um, I'll reach out to you separately and.
Oh, that'd be great.
Thank you, Leila. Appreciate it.
Yeah, appreciate you. Thank you.
Afternoon, everyone.
Sorry, I see Tom's hand up. Sorry, Tom.
Thank you. Just wanted to say that we had some discussion here about how, uh, Recology reaches out to the customers to let them know about rate changes, but I hope the city will do that as well. Um, you know, reading something on the back of the bill sometimes eludes my attention. And I think the city to being proactive to make sure that everybody understands and in the city that the rate payers are going to experience small increases, good form.
Okay. I don't actually see that as our direct responsibility, but it's a courtesy. So Leila, why don't you see what that would take or what would be involved with that? I know communication is always a challenge and we never get through to everybody that we want to, but I would also assume this company's, we haven't had to help do that in the past with this company, but let's take that, let's take that observation, um, and think about what we might do with that. Okay?
Sounds good.
Thank you. Thanks, Leila. Okay. Great. Thanks very much, Recology.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. So Leila, um, we haven't talked about this directly, but I, my assumption is you're going to facilitate or lead the conversation on this and you're looking for input, questions, observations, additional thoughts from council. Fair enough?
All that. Yep. And stuff that maybe we missed. And, um, but as we get closer to completion with city hall, I've been having conversations with staff really over the last year about what it'll be like to, to have all of us in one space. Um, since I've been the city manager, we have, we have gone from COVID to, um, not, you know, not having any office hours to having some office hours. And so it's been sort of just a transitional thing for us. And now that we'll be in a permanent facility, um, I want to kind of walk in at least, uh, with everyone understanding kind of how we're going to operate and knowing that could change and that could shift. So there's a handful of things that I wanted to, uh, and this is a conversation. I think the way that the mayor, uh, described it is that I'm going to propose some thoughts and, um, I want to hear your feedback and thoughts. And if other things come up for you that I haven't addressed, uh, you know, please feel free to bring it in. So I, I put together just a PowerPoint to help kind of me stay organized. Uh, so I'll go through that. We can stop and discuss as we go through that. And then when we're done, if there's other stuff, we can just, uh, have a conversation about it. So, I think we're all very excited to get into one building. It's like we're all kind of moving in together. We've been in this relationship for a long time and, um, it's the first time we're all going to like live together. So it's a little bit of a trip, uh, for, for some of us, but it's exciting. Um, and I think the biggest thing is, is that the, uh, all the services will, um, be combined. And that's, that's a really big, uh, deal. Um, so you just want to get, you guys can see my screen. Okay? Okay, great. So the first thing I want to talk about is kind of our proposals. So our being staff's proposal for the hours for city hall. So this will be what we call the front counter, the window. Um, and then I want to have a conversation with you about the use of city facilities. Um, and then I just want to kind of clarify public access. So what the public will have access to and then what they won't. Um, and then anything else that comes up for you, I would welcome the conversation around. So what staff are proposing is that the city hall front counter is open Monday through Thursday, 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM. We are currently open Monday through Thursday, 9:00 to noon. And the reason why we are proposing this, uh, there's a number of them, but the main reason is, is that we're small and staff need time in back of house to do work. And so that opens up the opportunity for two things, which is, uh, because we now will have the, the water utility clerk is actually housed out of city hall now. I would say the majority of the contacts that we have at city hall are related to the water utility. Uh, water has primarily or public works, especially during the summer, works a 410 schedule. And so this allows, uh, staff to kind of continue with that schedule or have some flexibility there. But again, the key, the most important thing for us is really having that back of house time, um, during the daytime. And then the other is, uh, we have our building official and hopefully we'll be hiring a planning and permit tech. They'll be out on doing, um, inspections at times. And again, having that time back of house is going to be really important. I did some outreach to all my colleagues in Tillamook County and wanted to give you a sense of what other cities, uh, do. So actually Nahalem is the only city that's open on Friday and they're open 9:00 to 12. Wheeler does allow by appointment only. We'll always do that. Like if someone needs to meet with a staff person on a Friday, they're working that Friday. We will always be open to having appointments. Um, but, but the majority, Wheeler, Bay City, Rockaway, Garabaldi and Tillamook City are all closed on Fridays. And so it's, I think what we're proposing is consistent with what other cities are doing in Tillamook County. And again, it allows staff time for back of house. It allows us to have, um, some flexibility and schedule, um, as well. So, I think I'll, I'll pause there and just get your kind of initial read on this. And if you have any questions or suggestions, I think we're all open to hearing that.
Um,
Go ahead.
You go ahead. I'll, I'll, I'll ruminate.
Well, my only comment about closed on Friday is, is that we have a lot of people that are second homeowners and don't come, you know, they might make a long weekend. Um, but the facilitating communication with the second homeowners might, uh, be enhanced if we had some limited hours on Friday to be available.
Well, I think we definitely will have the opportunity to, um, meet by appointment. And so that's something that when we start to advertise or put the communication out to the community, I'm imagining like something that goes into the water bill, uh, because that goes to every homeowner and just letting folks know that if they want to make an appointment, they can just call city hall and we can also facilitate that.
Okay.
I would assume just because the, uh, front desk is not open on Friday, that there's a great possibility people will still be in the office working on Fridays.
Yes. Yeah. Yes. I have staff that like the idea of 410s and I have staff that do not. And so this provides, um, then again, that flexibility. So I know at least one staff person would rather work five days a week, but the idea of having a full day where they don't have to, but the idea of having a full day where they don't have to go to the counter is very appealing to them.
Well, actually, my question was going to be exactly Tom's. I wasn't going to advocate for hours on Friday, but just to make sure that that by appointment on Friday was available. Because I, you know, it, it, it's easy to forget that the vast, well, I don't know about vast, but the overwhelming majority of homes in this town are owned by second homeowners. And so that's a big, big lock of stakeholders. And, you know, probably need to have as much access to the City Hall as, as a lot of the rest of us. But I'm, I'm confident that, you know, they, they'll have it certainly in person on Mondays and throughout the week, but on Friday if needed by appointment. So that, that makes sense to me. And I do think it's, you know, the point that you're making shouldn't have to be made, Leila, but it, it does have to be made, I guess, that even if nobody ever came to City Hall, the people that work there would have full-time jobs and would be busy. And so the opportunity to have some pure dedicated back office time is, is really valuable. Certainly was when I was working. So I appreciate you need to do that.
Thank you. Yeah, I knew Rockaway has a high percentage of second homeowners too, and this is, this has worked for them. But, and again, we'll just see how it goes. If we end up having, you know, troves of people wanting to meet on Fridays, then we'll reassess and maybe have a different setup at that time. But I appreciate the comments and the feedback and the understanding of that need.
So I, I really appreciate you being open at lunchtime, because I think that.
Yeah.
To access, I, I think that's really helpful. So thank you.
Yeah, and I'll think the staff that are primarily going to be doing this is that they'll, they'll be coordinating with each other, but that was intentional, is that we're available during the. Lunch hour for folks that aren't able to get away any other time.
Let me just ask the question is, what's your experience about who's using the front counter? And what are your high traffic intervals?
Yeah, so I actually had Nancy track this at one point and the majority were related to water bill payments. I think, and Nancy can correct me if I'm wrong, but like a high foot traffic day would be like five or less people coming up to the window. Court also is when we get close to a court date, that can also be a driver of traffic. And then because we're in separate facilities and it's by appointment only right now, but the building department would be another, an issuance of permits would be another a driver of that.
So I think it's a reasonable way to begin. My mind does not go back so much to what the history has been, because the last couple of years, just by virtue of the fact that the offices are separated, that we had a long period of time during COVID where nobody was available, people's habits changed. People who might have stopped by to even give a friendly hello stopped. You know, we all know, everybody has made the best of our current facilities that they can, but it's not exactly a welcome and friendly environment. The people are friendly, but.
Thanks for that.
No, no, I, I'm serious about this.
Yeah.
And the whole point of the, the new building is to be welcoming and opening and inviting. And I, I think we're really going to, I hope we're going to be making a very sharp break with the past couple of years and really kind of working together to set a standard of you're welcome to come in, you're welcome to make a comment, you're welcome to ask a question. You're welcome, you're welcome to do anything. Come on in and somebody, a person, which I think is still so super important, a person is there for you to talk to and get you to the right staff member or direct you to council. Or, you know, maybe we'll have Brad set up with a frequently asked questions, you know, booth in the corner or something, some, some additional ways to communicate beyond the, you know, with our very best efforts, the limited access people have had. So I personally would love to see a shift in. I'm not saying it's going to be like, hey, I'm going to go to the post office and now I'm going to go over to City Hall. But I'd, I'd love to see, and I'd love for us all to encourage more contact. Now that said, there, you're not going to know, you'll make plans, you'll make your best estimates. But until you're in there, and particularly after we get over the initial excitement of the building being open, because we will have a lot of people there in the beginning to see it. People are going to be curious, just like I walked into the new Bento place. I've been gone, I've been sick and I walked in there because I wanted to see it. It was new and it was beautiful. I had a great chat with the guy. I didn't buy a thing on that trip, but I went in because I was curious. So with staff and everybody, maybe including council for part of the help with this, we have to be ready to welcome people to something new and hear their feedback directly and then, you know, learn from it. So I think the hours are fine to begin with. And I think, I think we'll learn and then we'll adjust as we need to. And that would be, you know, maybe the first three months and then the, you know, first six months would be good, just normal check-ins to say what's working, what's not. And I'll be disappointed if we don't have more people coming in, frankly.
Yeah. No, I appreciate that and I, I, I agree. And one of the things that we will also, we'll find some way to track that in a meaningful, but not arduous.
Yeah.
Okay?
Yeah.
Because it may, you know, we want to be mindful and staff and I have talked about this, that if, if the demand does increase significantly, we may need to talk about how that's staffed right now. Because Nancy, as you know, she's really the primary person for the front counter. She's also the assistant city recorder and manages court. And so that, you know, that's something we're going to be paying very close attention to is how this is affecting staff as well. So, yeah, I hear all of that. And, you know, the other reason too about being closed on Fridays, it's helpful is court is on Friday. And that's, that's quite a lot of work. And Nancy is the person that runs court and so she needs that Friday to really focus, even though it's once a month, it is a big impact. And this allows her to really focus on that aspect of her job. So that's the commitment I made to my team is that let's just see how it goes this first year. And if there is a need for us to think differently about this, staff it differently, we'll have that conversation around budget time next year. So we'll be paying attention to that. And I think it'd be good for us to get maybe like a six months into the new building, kind of an update on how things are going and I'll be happy to do that. And Nancy, if I forget, maybe you could note that for the forecaster for me for December.
So, so as the historian on the city council, I was reminded after Catherine's comment, we used to call the City Hall the heart of the city. I mean, it really was. If you had a question, it didn't even need to be city-related. You knew that somebody there would either be able to answer your question or send you to a person that could answer the question. When we have the tornado that came through the city, my, my, as an emergency response person, my immediate thought would be everybody would go to the fire station, because that's kind of the center of emergency response. That's not what happened. Everybody went to City Hall because they trusted that they would get that kind of information from the City Hall. So I, if we can just get back to the sense that it's the heart of the city and it's part, you know, it's welcoming, you can, there, you'll get quite, hopefully you'll get questions that have to do with the city as a whole, as well as the operations of the city. The last thing I will say is prior to COVID, we were open five days a week and it was really hard on staff. It was really difficult and particularly on the city manager. It was very difficult. So I think these new hours reflect the impact of COVID, but also reflect a better, a better, for lack of a better word, taking care of staff. So that they have the time to get the job done and don't feel pressured. So this just, that's just the history. And again, that heart of the city, I'm hoping a year from now, that's what we're calling City Hall.
Yeah, me too. Thank you for those comments.
Leila, I'm glad you got into the fact that court's on Friday, because I was having a hard time and I am having a hard time envisioning how we're closed on Friday, but are open for court on Friday, and which means that you will have foot traffic coming in. And, you know, when people get assigned or get assessed their fines, usually they want to go to a counter and pay it if, in many instances. So give me the vision for how that operates then, if you would please.
Well, I'll be honest with you. We haven't entirely sorted that out yet, but that's something I'll be working on with Nancy. Right now, because we hold this at, hold court at the fire department, we have to have multiple staff assisting with that. And so that's likely going to have to be the case here, is that we'll have to have some additional support as Nancy's clerking for the judge. Maybe someone's able to take payment at the counter. But I'll be honest, we haven't sorted through the exact details of, of that. I think once we get into the space and understand the logistics, I plan to have a conversation with, with her and I'll let Nancy really decide and drive that discussion, because she's the one that does that work. And whatever she needs from me is, I intend to provide. And I know she can hear me, so I mean it. But that's a great question. The way we've done it at other city halls is there was somebody who was able to take payment and then as they walk out of the courtroom, they can just go make their payment and leave.
And they're not able to do that now, right, at the fire station where we have been holding court for?
Nancy, maybe you could just jump in here. I believe you do take payment at court. Is that right?
Yes, I currently do take payment directly there. So I could, I was planning on just still taking it in the courtroom. At the same time, I was going to plan on doing it the same way. I, I do everything.
Alrighty.
Alright.
Very good. Thanks for the question, Tom. I wasn't thinking about that at all. Anything else on this one before we go to the next?
Great, well, thank you. That's great. So I want to talk about sort of the use of city facilities. And this kind of gets at what I think these two or three of you have said is about this being the heart of the city. This is a community asset. And so we want this space to be welcoming to folks, but we also have a facility. We got to run this facility. And so these are actually, I think Nancy, Nancy was in hospitality industry for a number of years. And I asked her to kind of come up with some guidelines or questions that we would need to really think about in terms of allowing the space to be used by other people. And so in black, those are those questions. And then in green are sort of my suggestions. And again, I'm willing to take, this is a conversation for folks. I'll go through the list and then I'll leave this up here and we can have a discussion about that. But this is really related to the council chambers and the large conference room. So if you recall, the way we have the facility set up is that you'll walk into the main entry and the reception will be to your right. And then directly in front is the large conference room, which is accessible off of the entrance. And then council chambers will be directly to the left. So those two facilities, it's possible that folks will want to use them. And so one of the questions that comes up is, well, who's allowed to quote unquote rent? And I should probably say use the space. And I've had conversations with other, the other city managers. We actually get together once a month and asked them and it was a real range of use. One city charges and lets anybody use it and, you know, but they have staff that can actually manage that. Most just allow community, that most, you know, some allowed for-profit entities to just use it. But our suggestion is that we allow community groups and that can be a broad, you know, definition of what that is. Nonprofit and other kind of governmental entities are welcome to use the space for free, that we wouldn't charge for that. And we would develop a facility use agreement. I think that's just good from a risk management liability standpoint, that, that we would have folks sign. And that we just ask folks that they return the room the way they found it. So there'll be a trash can in there that they can use, but if there's, for some reason, like a lot of trash generated, we'd like them to sort of take that off-site. It's sort of like leave no trace kind of approach. How many people? I think we just limit it to the occupancy that's allowed for each of the spaces, right? And then do we have tables and chairs? So we, we actually, you know, we're space limited in the council chambers. We don't have a bunch of extra tables in there. We have tables in the conference room that can be moved in any way, shape or form, just to whatever use that is. But if folks need tables in the council chambers, we would recommend that they, they procure those on their own and bring those in. The other question that came up is are they allowed to use our audio visual equipment? And the way that Josh is intending to set this up is it'll be a pretty simple share process. It'll screen share that allows folks to use the, the, the screens and so forth. And so we anticipate that that will be something that folks can use. So the conference room will have a really large monitor that you just, I think, basically plug your computer into. We won't provide a computer, but it's like how the Pine Grove kind of works in a way is we plug into their system. We will, like, we'll develop a how-to sheet, again, just like the Pine Grove has in terms of how to use these. And then if they need help, we'll, we'll jump in and, and assist. And then we will also, and actually some of you have been in my office and have been like, how do I get on the wifi? And I'm like, I don't know. So we're going to have guest wifi that will be password protected. So if folks come in and use that space, they'll be able to use our guest wifi system and that will be worked into the facility use agreement, for example, like. Are food and drinks allowed? My recommendation is, is no food. I mean, that doesn't mean the city can't have, you know, something in that space with food, but outside users, it's going to be a lot harder to manage that. So that's my recommendation. And are drinks allowed? You know, I think drinks that have lids, it's okay. I've actually spent 12 hours at a volleyball tournament and we weren't allowed to bring our coffee into the floor and that just felt terrible when I had to drop my daughter off at 7:00 AM in Eugene. So I think that seems like a reasonable thing that we can allow people to do. And, you know, how far in advance? We'd love people to book a week in advance, but if, say, you know, EBC and B wanted to use it tomorrow and it's open, like, we'll do that. Nancy's planning to create a calendar that we'll maintain internally in order to, to facilitate that. The rental hours, so rental is probably not the right word, but the use hours, my recommendation, it's only during business hours. We're going to have a pretty sophisticated security system in there. If folks are using it after hours, then that means someone on staff has to stay and lock up the facility. And so I'm not super comfortable with that. And then the other thing is, is like, how can people use a space? Tapes, staples, nails or pins? No, like, no. They can bring easels with flip charts and we have easels. So if they request those, we'll be glad to lend them out. So that's sort of our first take at what folks can and can't do in the facilities. Brad?
Yeah, just a couple of observations or suggestions. I know this is something you're working on, but I think it'd be a great idea to have a request process. So when someone wants a room, that there's either a form on the city website or an email address specific to that.
Yep.
And if it's possible, because whoever's managing this, this would potentially help them only get valid requests if the calendar can be published, just showing that the room's in use. Not necessarily who's using it, but if I go and look at a calendar, go, oh, I can't have it Monday, I'm not going to send you an email asking for Monday. So I think that saves time, helps the requester as well. And lastly, we'll see how it goes, but we might want to put out a policy limiting the number of times per month a specific entity can use it. I believe the library did something similar to that, just so we don't have one particular group monopolizing the facility.
That's a great suggestion. Do you have any idea what their policy is? We can reach out to them if not.
I, I don't, but I know at one point, one long, long ago, coffee with counselors or some things. I, I don't, but I know at one point, one long, long ago, coffee with counselors or some things had to be moved around because we had reached our limit with the library, but I don't, I don't remember exactly what that was.
Yeah, those are great suggestions and stuff that's actually crossed my mind in terms of the calendar and, and the form. So I'll work with staff on that and we'll see what we can do, but those are great ideas. Tom?
Thank you. So none of this pertains to the use of the bathrooms. But of course, you know, and then there's going to be the interface with the farmer's market. So tell me, help me a little bit understand how that works with respect to access to the facility.
Yeah, I actually have that bit on the next slide. So we can talk about that when we get there, if that's okay. Just want to make sure we kind of cover all of our bases with this if council has any other. Again, this will be one of the things that we implemented. We'll see how it goes. And, you know, adjust. I think we have to be really flexible, but I think sending the message to people that, hey, you're welcome here. And when the space isn't being used, it's a beautiful space. And, you know, I'm so excited for folks to come and see, especially these public spaces is where we, you know, put a lot of intentional, I think elegant bits in to make it a really warm and welcoming space. We want folks to, to use that. And so I think we'll just have to be flexible and adjust to, to the needs. But the bathrooms are a little different and so I'll talk about that in a moment. And just so you know, when the, when we're open, those will be public bathrooms. Those will be allowed. But folks can, you know, come in and use those anytime that the city is open. New York?
So I think this is a really good start. I'm glad. I don't know if you thought about it, but I'm glad there's not a auto sign up something here. I, I think it's important that there be some, some hands-on from a real person from city staff who's knowledgeable, who can vet requests, understand, just see if there may be some challenges. Because if this, we'll, we'll see how it flows. You can't plan it all in advance, but always something comes up when you have space available to people. And then see who's using the space and the purpose of it. So I'm, I'm glad, I'm glad that you plan to manage that in a personal way with somebody looking at it. And I think Brad's suggestion is good too. Maybe as we get into it a little further, this is one of those where we'll, I'm sure you'll, you'll plan and get it set up and then we'll see how it goes. I guess I'm assuming in this too, that we won't do a big push like right away out to groups, but once we're, I don't know, I don't want to use the word soft opening, but I guess I just did. So, you know, we have this space, we'll start to let people know. And then as we get through the busier summer months, maybe fall will be a time then to really more consciously invite not-for-profit groups, invite the local folks to come in who may not have seen it and say, this is your space as well. You're welcome here. Let's see how it will work for you. But something that's more outreach on our part, I wouldn't suggest doing that right off the bat because the priority will be to get core city business done smoothly and get everybody settled. And that's the first order of business. So, but I think this is nice and Nancy did a good job with this. Thanks.
Yeah, thank you. And, you know, I appreciate what you just said a great deal too, because it will be interesting to see how many folks use this and how often. And Nancy is actually the person that will be doing this. So again, kind of paying attention to the impact of this new facility on the services we provide and how that affects staff is something that's top of mind for me, because if it becomes something that's creating a lot of work, we're going to need to respond to that because I'm pretty committed to not burning my staff out. They all work really hard as it is, but we also have a balance with the services we provide to the community. And so it's just a matter of making sure we're adequately staffed to do that. So, so we'll just be paying really close attention to this. And I think, yeah, I think that's, that's great. And, you know, this isn't the last, like, time we'll ever talk about this. All of you are welcome at any point in time to say, oh, I thought of this. Did you think of this? And, but yeah, Nancy will be the person, will be the gatekeeper for sure. So.
You know, what we don't have on there as a use would be the use of the council. So currently, I know I have stretched to find places to have a private conversation with somebody that I don't want to have in a restaurant or outside at the garden or outside at the coffee place. So not, we don't need to work on it today, but I think that's another element of use for all of us as counselors. For there may be times when we want to meet or need to meet with a group or an individual in a private space. Yeah, well, we don't have it up here. So just, I don't want to make.
No, thank you. That's a great, like, I was, like I said, I might have left some stuff off. So I think that would be something that, yeah, you would let Nancy know, hey, I'm going to meet with a group of folks. I need the, the conference room and we would book that for you. It'd be a little different process for city council. But that's, yes, absolutely. You guys should be using that space for, for your city business. Absolutely.
There's a small conference room off of, I think, your office?
Yeah, yes. And council can certainly.
Yeah, I'm thinking particularly in Catherine's question, that might, especially if it's small, that might also be something to have access to.
Yes, city council would, would be welcome to use that. That would not be open to the general public.
Right, right.
And I, you know, the next slide, if we're comfortable moving forward, I can go ahead and do that. Okay, so public access. So I'm going to start with like the restrictions and then go to like the, the positive stuff. And the restrictions, I don't want you to take these as negative. I don't want anyone in the communities to take these as negative. But I do want to set expectations for people so they understand. And I think all of this is pretty straightforward. But there'll be restricted access to the police station and that actually includes staff. You have to have a certain credential to, to access that space without an escort, right? So I'll have the ability to get in and out of that building. I'll probably be the only other staff person besides police, but I won't really, I won't go into the building unless I know someone else is there. And if I do need to get the, and I might even do the, the appropriate clearances, but I, there's no reason for me to be in there unless someone else is in there that I need to talk to. But we, we are going to, to encourage people, do this in a positive way, to go to reception. And that's how you would have access to police. And, you know, we're a small police station, so we don't have, you know, a dedicated person for police to be there 24/7 at the window. So if they're available and can meet with staff, they, someone who comes in, they will. And if they're not available, then we will make arrangements to assist whoever comes in to connect with one of our officers. The administration portion of the building, so kind of everything behind the front counter will be only accessible to staff and city council. The staff parking and access roads, this actually has come up a little bit. We are building what we call kind of a half street improvement because we decided to, eventually we will, you know, build out the rest of that road. But that, the primary and only purpose of that road is to access the staff parking lot. And so because police work a range of different hours, that is their primary parking spot. We are recommending and that that access road and that parking lot just be for staff only at all times. And this includes during the farmer's market, because we need our PD to be able to get in and out of that space without any, any barriers. And so that's, that's something I feel pretty strongly about. And probably during the market, we'll come up with just some sort of, you know, signage there that says no parking, because that will be a change from previous years. There's a little grid, you know, sort of gathering space that's behind, it's sort of in between the parking lot, police station and city hall. There's a, there'll be a picnic table out there. I said it'll be generally restricted to staff and we're not there. You know, my hope is that that's kind of like a a little quiet space for staff to be able to gather, but certainly if folks, you know, meander over there during the market and no one's going to kick them out or anything. But that's our, that's our hope is that that's just generally kind of a place where staff can sit. If you guys want to have a meeting out there with somebody, you would be welcome to do that too. We have talked about potentially fencing off the parking lot. That's something that's been suggested to me by a couple of staff and we're just going to see how it goes for this first year. And if that is something that we feel like is important, just for safety, one of our staff got, actually it's happened to me too. I would just say, it's, it's rare, but it happens where someone has kind of confronted us in our vehicles and that's, it's a scary situation. And right now that's tucked behind a building that has very little visibility. And at least a two or three times that I'm aware of that happening since I've been here, it's been like on the street and so it's been more visible. So that's come up as something that we want to just kind of see how it goes. And if folks are feeling like that might be something we want to do, then we can look at that and, and budget for it for next year. But for right now, we're not doing that. Any questions about those sort of just limitations, I suppose, that we'll have? Okay, great. So the reception area, the large conference room and council chambers and the restrooms. So the restrooms will be open to the public during the day. And when cities opens, Monday through Thursday, and we'll probably keep the back entrance open because you can lock off, the way we've set it up is that you can secure just that space. So only the restrooms are accessible on Fridays as well if there's staff in the building. But it'll be open during the farmer's market. It'll be open when, for example, 4th of July, which is also the farmer's market. It's going to be, that's going to be interesting. And so for any special events that city council approves to have on Underhill Plaza, we would make arrangements to have that restroom space open. And then we're going to likely, so someone on staff will have to be there to secure that space once the event is over. And so I'm working internally to figure out who that is. So it might be the on-call public works person. Or if the officer on duty is willing to do that, they can just go in and secure the building and set the alarm once the event is over. EBC and B, so there's a little communications room that will be off the side of the large conference room. And so that'll be available for folks to come in and do their, their testing. Ideally, they'd let us know in advance that they're coming, but we'll, we'll just kind of feel that out and see how it goes. So we'll make contact with the appropriate people who would be using that space and we kind of set up a process for them. So for example, if the conference room is being utilized by a community group and someone wants to come in, we can actually let them in through the back way. So that's why having advanced notice would be, would be helpful. As I mentioned, access to the police station and to police staff will occur through the reception desk or by calling non-emergency and leaving a message and an officer will return that call and schedule an appointment. One of the ways that we were able to build this space and reduce costs was that we combined, you know, police had hoped to have a training room. We needed a large conference room. We combined the two. So that space is just as much, you know, this is an integrated facility. There's a reason why PD would have already actually had a separation, even if we were in one building for the, you know, the, the, the legal reasons that are required for that. But this is a, this is a city hall facility and it includes police. So we don't think of the police building as a separate building. It's where it's all one. And then the public parking lot, and this is something that's actually pretty important to me, is that it's available to the public during non-business hours, right? So that will be available to the market. It will be available for anyone who wants to park there during summer months. It can be overflow parking. I think it's important for, in the evenings, you know, like things like that. So we, I think that's important because in my experience, usually underutilized parking lots, you know, contribute to parking problems. And so during the busy weekends or on a holiday, that space will be open and we'll probably need to put up some signage or something to that effect. We don't want folks parking there overnight or putting their vans there. So we'll make sure that we sign it appropriately. But that's something that I think is, is important and that we do have available for the community.
You know, on that one, it's, this is a detail. On that one, it might be nice to connect with the Hoffman Center. They're a direct line. They have a lot of weekend events. They do large things. The garden has events. People end up parking in the neighborhoods and it might be just a nice courteous thing if.
Sure, that's a great suggestion. Yeah, we'll do that. Yeah. And the signage and things like that, as we get into the space, we'll be, oh, we should put something up here. I will note too, that I've been coordinating with the Tillamook County Clerk and the, so for this May, you will drop your ballot off where you always do, which is across the street from the police station. But they will be installing a new ballot box at city hall. So that will be moved for the November election and future elections, the drop-off box will be at our new city hall.
That is great. I'll be glad to get back to that. Good.
Yeah. So that's, that's what I have. One thing I didn't, I'm going to stop sharing so we can see each other, didn't talk about is we're going to have a celebration to open this space. And I think there's no time better than the present to talk about kind of what I'm forecasting that to look like. As I mentioned, we'll take possession of the building in, in June and furniture gets delivered the first week. I'm anticipating staff will move second or third week and get settled. So we'll have a period where we will be actually closed. We'll still be taking calls, but we won't be able to meet, you know, we can make appointments and so forth, but so there'll be a transition period. I'm not exactly sure how that's going to look yet in mid-June. And I'm actually out of the office the last week of June and then it's 4th of July week. And so I'm anticipating it'll probably take us three weeks or so to get just kind of everything dialed in, right? We got to get everybody's computers set up. We've got to make sure we're connecting to the, to the city's networks. So I want to give us a lot of space to, to do that. So I'm not anticipating that city council will hold its first meeting in the new facility in June or July. But I am anticipating that our first meeting will occur in August. And I would love to schedule a celebration of that facility. My thinking right now, and I'm open to suggestions about this that would be after the 4th of July, but as early as we can in June and not on a Friday, because that's when the market is in full swing. I've, I've actually gone both directions with that. I was like, wouldn't it be great to do it when the market is in full swing? So I'm open to your feedback on that. And we don't have to decide exactly today, but I would like to get us a date that we can start to aim for, so I can order some big scissors and a big ribbon and start working with you to to get that celebration together. Sergeant Sims is actually helping me coordinate with some folks that will help us raise the flags. I think that's a good and important thing to do on, as we open the building. So we'll be, as we roll the flags up the flagpole, I want to honor that, that part of the event. So, yeah, so that's kind of my thinking right now is, is maybe the second or third week of July would be our, our grand opening. And then, then we start.
I'm getting a calendar. I have to stay quiet till I get my calendar.
Yeah, I was like, I have just.
You got? Counselors, what, what are your thoughts?
I think post 4th of July would potentially be good. How soon? Did you say you're moving furniture in? First week of June?
First week of June, yes. The week of June 2nd is when they will deliver furniture. It's going to take a few days for them to install all of the furniture. So I'm not anticipating staff really starting to move in until the second, potentially third week of. So I'm not anticipating staff really starting to move in um, until the second, potentially third week of um, of June. And we'll be doing this, you know, we're not hiring big fancy movers. We'll be, we'll be doing a lot of this ourselves because we don't have to carry a lot of heavy furniture. It's just mostly our.
Potentially look at something that last week of June, like the 23rd, but I just think it would. Oh, nevermind. I was gonna say.
Leila, earlier you said June and you didn't mean June.
I didn't mean June. I'm sorry. I really want to be there.
Well, I think that would add.
Me to be there. And I'm sorry.
Or if you're trying to work out any little inks or some things that need to be done before we open to the public, I'm, I'm all about um, after July 4th.
Okay. Well, we can coordinate uh, calendars, you know, offline, but I just wanted to sort of get that out there into the public world. Kind of clarify that I am, we are going to hold our July 9th meeting at the Pine Grove. And likely and still have Zoom for the 16th of July. But the goal is that we're ready to rock in August and that um, I anticipate work sessions, right, will be also in person um, starting in August. And we will be set up too, that if someone needs to participate remotely on the council or staff or guests, we'll be able to provide that through the Zoom option. So um, we're just going to expand our abilities and also be able to spend some more time face to face. Planning Commission will go in person, my hope is, in August as well.
Good. Have we got confirmation from Planning Commission? They know that's coming?
Well, yeah, and I'll let them know that. Uh, and again, it's, we do have some commissioners who are not here full-time. So again, they'll be able to participate via Zoom. People will just now have the option to participate in person. And I just want to set the expectation that city council and planning commission will be held in person. And uh, there will always be an option for uh, commissioners or counselors to participate via Zoom.
Okay. When it comes to dates, so do we think this needs to be a, a Saturday? For people to really be able to access it?
Yeah, I'm open to that. I thought about that too. Like the weekend might be better for folks that work or, you know, folks that are only here on the weekends.
Or, you know, bring your kids or.
Yeah, I'd love my daughter to be there.
It's summer. That's not relevant. I, I just give you the advice, don't push it. It, I'd like you to, I'd like to see you plan some time for, it doesn't go exactly how's, how we think for move-in. Give yourself, give everybody some slack so that when we set a date and we set this up, because we'll be inviting, we'll be inviting a lot of people to this, the political people. So if we think back of the um, opening or the groundbreaking, which Linda and I both worked on, there's a lot of coordination with, and state people will want to come to this too.
For sure, yeah.
So there's a lot to think about with, there always is a lot to think about. I know I say that all the time, but. So let's, let's look at a, I think a Saturday is, is the way to go rather than a weekday and put it later in the month rather than earlier in the month. The fourth, the fourth is a big deal. And I think the fourth is gonna be a really big deal this 4th of July. So let's give ourselves some breathing space on the other side of that. In addition to the um, just the general move-in things that have to happen.
Thank you for that. I think I was being a little ambitious, but I, I love the pushback and I welcome it. So.
You're gonna get the pushback on this because we can't, it's not a, I, I don't want anybody killing themselves to get to a finish line for this date when we can set it later.
Right, yeah, fair.
That's my opinion. I don't know how the rest of council feels or if there's anything you feel differently about it. Tom's thumbs up. Linda's always go, go, go. I know that, but okay.
Like I've been waiting for this.
I think if we're not gonna.
Twenty years.
If we're not gonna meet as a council in the building until the August meeting, then.
And it's the August meeting. Like that's, I feel like that's reasonable, but.
Well, I think it would be strange to have a grand opening too much in advance of that.
Yeah.
So, or we'd be answering questions. Why aren't you, you had the grand opening. How come you're not meeting?
Yeah, right?
Let's, yeah, I, I would think the latter part of July.
Okay.
Got to have music though.
What's that?
You have to have music.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Um, um, yes. So you know, it would be great if anyone on council or two of you want to uh, work with me on planning this. I would most welcome that. You don't need to fight over it right now. But uh, it would be great to get some support and um, input on how we do this. We can maybe get a group of us together to uh, pull this, this thing together. But yeah, I was already thinking about music, the ribbon and the big scissors, you know, those are critical. Uh, the flags. So I've gotten that far. Cupcakes, I don't know. So we'll, we'll sort it out and um, I would welcome that. So yeah, look at your schedules and maybe send me your blackout dates for July. And uh, yeah, and then we can land on a date that makes sense. A Saturday, it looks, sounds like a weekend is a good, I think it's a good call. And then I'll confer with uh, I'm gonna volunteer you Catherine to work with me on finalizing the date and then.
Yeah, I will.
I'm looking at the 20, I'm looking at the 26th. I don't think we need to make it that complicated, but.
Yeah.
I mean, so hopefully that anybody can make that work now. I think, I think um, I think we need another person in addition to me because of course I'm never the fun one. We all know that painfully so sometimes. Oh, Catherine, I see Tom over there. Think about how you'd like to help. Uh, Linda, I'm gonna, I'm just gonna nominate you anyway to work with a political beat and think about community leaders as well. That was a lot of work. I mean, we all know it's not a simple thing. That was a lot of work and coordination. And it's not too soon to start on that. Do, could we, Leila, would you be comfortable just saying July 26th is our working date right now? And if we get up against a big obstacle, we'll change it, but otherwise that's what we're gonna do?
Yeah, that feels great to me.
Yeah, it feels like the right date. It should give us plenty of time.
It should, it will, yeah. That's, that feels great. That's.
I'm thinking the, the choir director at the high school.
Right.
Gotta have him back.
Oh, yeah.
But there's a lot of, you know, it is an opportunity for a lot of groups to be there and participate. So we can all and should all put our hats on to think about all the people we can reach out to um, in the community. I mean, that's, that's the most important is the, the political people are important and we're always gonna need help. So you wanna, you want to be great, it sounds so calculating, but you want to be gracious and you want people to be there and enjoy it. And, but it's the people that we're serving in the, in the area, not just within the city of Manzanita. So.
Oh, for sure.
Think about that. Okay.
That's the most important part. And I would also extend that to the community too. If something comes to mind or you want to make sure we remember, uh, send an email to city hall or to me directly or anyone on council. And um, we'll take that under, you know, into consideration too. That's great. Well, I appreciate being able to talk about this. I don't get all five of you in a room ever. So it's, I figured we might as well just party plan a little bit. Um, and it's exciting. Like it's, it's super exciting. I'm uh, looking forward to walking you through uh, the space. The um, the siding has gone up at least in the, in the um, conference room from the old building and it's just gorgeous, just absolutely beautiful. So I'd like to think this is a simple but very elegant uh, building. And I'm really proud of what we were able to accomplish. Um, you know, it's not a stripped down manufactured home or something. It's just really a beautiful space that um, yeah, really proud of. So, cool.
Okay. Great discussion on this and also on the rates, actually.
Yeah, yeah, that was great. And I'll prepare that um, for you probably in May and then it'll go into effect in June, but we'll, we'll take a look.
Okay. Anything else for the good of the order?
At our council meeting, we cut it short for council updates. So do we want to cover that at this meeting?
I don't think so, simply because it's not noticed. And let's make up for that, uh, let's make up for that in our next meeting. Meeting, yeah. Just because we don't have the same um, breadth or reach on this meeting, Brad, if that's okay. Unless there's something that's exceptional that you'd want to make sure we know or we were aware of before next council meeting.
Um, well, I will just briefly say the 4th of July parade committee is underway. I'm acting as the liaison from city council this year. They will be presenting at our next council meeting with more details about the parade. But I just wanted to say that the beginning of next month will be when their site is up and available for folks who'd like to participate in the parade to register.
Okay. Every year, I can't believe how fast 4th of July comes back around again. It's crazy.
It's on a Friday this year.
Yeah, that's the other thing. I was like, oh, it's a Wednesday. Good. Anyway, that's terrible. They're all good. They're all good. So.
Yeah, it'll be a good time.
Yeah, okay. Well, thank you, everybody. Thanks for um, thanks for the work that went into this uh, second topic today. So all staff, without, you mentioned Nancy, but I know everybody's participating. So thanks to everyone.
Appreciate that. Appreciate the input too.
Hey, here's a thought. Let's not meet again this week. What do you think? Is everybody okay with that?
I'm good with that.
We've had a long, well, I, you know, I should say this. We've had a, a long run of um, some long ones. And I just really have appreciated it from council meeting last week through the, the other stuff we had to do and the land use hearing and this, I really appreciate everybody's efforts in all of it in terms of preparation and staying strong through long sessions and really attending the things. It's, it's, it's a good quality. I, it's not a, it's not a surprise to me, but I just want to make sure I say it and it, you know, it's not taken for granted. I know everybody sees that as their job. So, but I, it's, it's good. It feels good, even though it's a lot. So I'm really happy to have worked with you, but I really don't want to work with any of you for the rest of the week. Don't take it personal. All right. All right. So we'll see you next time.
Okay, sounds good.
Thanks, Leila.
Thanks.